The first being with USDA, as Mr. Turner alluded to. The second being with the Water,排水管 Development Board. The third being with CObank, which is a private lender that works exclusively with rural water supplies, small cities, that kind of thing. So there's some advantages and disadvantages to each of those options. With USDA, I think you all have plenty of experience with USDA and the amount of time that it takes to get through the application and P E R, environmental costs, there's a long time before the loan's available to you. An advantage of USDA is they have a longer term, a longer loan term. They've been loaned up to 40 years, which is longer than anybody else will, of the ones we've talked to. So there's some advantage with that. Their rates are as low as can be, they're pretty much market rates. So your money would go pretty far with that loan. With the Development Board, their application time is a little bit shorter. They don't offer one of those longer terms. They offer a 30-year term on the loans at the max. Some advantage would be, though, they actually can offer loans below market. I think 135 points below, which is 1.35% below market rates. So you actually have a submarket interest rate on that loan. And there's also the potential for some principal forgiveness. If the project was classified as an urgent meeting project, meaning there's imminent threat to the public water supply, which I think there is. They also offer varying levels of principal forgiveness. So almost like a grant, they forgive some of that principal if you're not really borrowing the full amount. That's the potential with the Development Board. And just from personal experience, they're easier to work with than the USDA. And the third option is CObank. Being a private lender, your rates won't be quite as low, but the turnaround time to get the loan is much quicker, as quick as two months maybe. So you may, you know, you pay a little bit more money, but you get your money quicker. So I think there's, you know, all three are viable options. But I think the Water Development Board is probably, if I had to give a recommendation right now, would probably be with Water Development Board. There's more to look at with each one of them, but just through some preliminary investigations, that's what I'm looking for. So I'd have to try to answer some more questions. I can't get too dark, too into the details, but if you all have any questions about the financing part, let me know, then I can try to help you out.
What do you think, Mr. Turner? The second one?
If you would ask my recommendation, I recommend the Texas Water Development Board. Now, I met with them for the first time at a AECO meeting on last Friday, and then I went actually on Wednesday, Tuesday, we went to Pleasanton. And they think we have a pretty good chance. And the forgivable part is because it is pretty urgent. TCQ, I just want to give you a heads up, will probably come in and do some bad boy kind of thing, inspect our hands on some of the things that they find. Because we have a well offline, and it's been offline for some time. They say that they see that we need to make some changes, and that they know they'll be quite costly. We'll probably get a preliminary report from them within the next two or three weeks. And so sadly to say, because we have this problem, Texas Development Water Board will definitely come to forgive some of it, but they can't until we know what it is. And so I would say that I would recommend that we go forward with the Texas Development Water Board. This is what this agency is for, this is what they do. And they are doing community outreach, and they have long meetings to come out to the community to let people know of these wonderful grants and loans and low-interest things to help people.
And I'll add on, obviously, the water grant is very appealing to everybody. I mean, basically, they're giving you money, it's not a loan. The Water Development Board Avenue is the closest thing to grant money that you'll be able to get. We haven't seen anything available from USDA, although they say, oh, there's always a chance. My worry is that you get too far in the process and they pull that one out for you and there's no loan, there's no grant there, it's just straight loans. So I think the Development Board has the strongest potential to get some of that principal forgiven and reduce your borrowing.
Yes, and they don't call it. They call it forgiveness, meaning that you borrow a million, that they can forgive a certain portion of that. And I think he said that on the average, and we didn't know ourselves until we took CObank, that they are typically between 13% to 15% less in interest rates than anybody else because they are credit. It's the Texas Water Development Board going out, giving the loan to us. And so their rates are so much lower than we ever could get.
They seem to rule, I would say, with about 13% on your money compared to going to a private lender or even with the USDA.
Mr. Turner, let's wait.
So if say, for say, if we borrowed a million dollars, how much money will be getting from that?
They can't tell us until we actually put in the application. One of the things that we have to do is they want everybody in the room together. So they want my engineer, my public works, and my attorney to take a call so that we can start talking. But we pretty much have an idea of what we need and the design, and then they can tell us how much forgiveness there is. Now, they've mentioned some numbers such as the census numbers and the low income, low domestic income. For the state right now, it's 41, the city, $41,000 for average, but the city of Floresville, we're at 53. So we're not going to get the most forgiveness, but there is forgiveness because TCQ is going to come back to say, you all need to do that. If you have TCQ saying that you need to make these changes to your water, then it counts to say that this is, it gives us a way to say it is an emergency, it is something that we need to address.
Is it 50/50% per $100,000 or per minute?
No.
They have a table, and I now have the numbers on my head, but it's graduated based on certain factors. So it could be, they forgive 200,000 off the principal, they could forgive 300,000 off the principal. It's based on a scoring system, based on the need, based on your median income and some other factors.
Mr. Turner?
Would we be able to pay that off, or is that going to be locked in for 30, 40 years?
No, 30 years is the maximum you can go out, but you can always pay it off.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. So we're going to have to increase another payment. Are they going to come back and review our water rates since we got another payment? And raise it up that way also? And so why don't we take, you know, we got 2.5 million in the water fund. At least take 500,000 out and pay 5,600 down for this borrowed portion of it, but we don't have that bigger payment?
Yes, you can structure it if you want. And we would want to be able to bring it to the table to do that. But they have to do what they call an intake application. And I don't want to start that process without the council having some type of knowledge as to what we want to do so that we can lock down and have those numbers. They're in Austin, but we can do this via conference call. They just want to get all the players in the room. We provide them with some preliminary information. And then what they want to do is walk us through the application. And so we're coming through the table, I'll pick your number of a half million dollars, then we could say, we know some cost of this, and we have half million dollars that we can actually put in here for funding, and then we'll see what we want to borrow. But we need to have that intake application, and I think that's what Brady wants to do. We want to be able to say, yes, if they come back and go, yes, Henry, Adam, we're ready to go forward, then you all come and say, no, I don't want it.
Well, what do you need from the council tonight?
I just need a consensus that this is the way that you all want to go forward for us to spend the time.
Well, I don't know, you decide we don't want to go forward with what you have after a year, back after a year. Well, you know, you could go along and see what it is and then let us know.
Go ahead, give her permission.
Right.
You can give her permission to do so.
Yeah, part of the process is to fill out the project information form with the Development Board. And you give them, it's just basically a data form on that thing, and they take that, review it. But that doesn't obligate you to loan from them. That's just information for them to start trying to figure out the best option for you from a linear perspective. So what we'd like to do is do that, submit that form to them, which they need before they can really talk to us about it, they need that form first. So that we can have that discussion with them. Then they'll sit down and say, hey, I think your best option is this, this, and this, based on the information provided.
They said we're not locked.
No, but it's not.
Okay, get the permission to roll them, and then we can say yea or nay.
But we can't find out more information until it's done.
Okay.
Mr. Douglas, did you have some good?
I've kind of wondered, how did we get to a billion dollars when your well back was 500,000 dollar well? Then it went up to 650,000. Where do you try to borrow over a billion dollars for a water well?
A well and an interconnect.
Yeah, the interconnect, we, we are, we have talked about that before. You were saying another way it must be a pay-for our value.
The other way we thought of paying was actually using the reserves. We could use the water reserves. I believe Big Tommy said we had a million dollars in there. Well, we have 2 million dollars in the reserves, but if we start using that much, we will go down to a million dollars. Then what the USDA is saying is that it would change our structure, and then our water rates could go back up, even increase even more than we've done before because we don't have that in reserve. And so we wanted to find different mechanisms, but I don't want to start the application process. You ultimately get to say yea or nay, but I don't want to start this process if you're not inclined to be able to do that. So we're putting together the interconnect, which is an alternative water source, as well as drilling and the water.
Mr. Douglas?
So you're saying that the 650,000 is for the well and the rest is for the interconnect?
Sure.
How much is the interconnect?
I think we estimate 350, 350 something in that ballpark. So that, yes, that's, to answer your question.
Well, that's, well, it has to be around 150,000 dollars. You know, I remember earlier last year it was about 500,000 dollars.
I think, I think we, in the previous year, I think we said 550 or something like that.
Yeah.
So the million dollars combines those two.
Still the well ended up 100,000 dollars.
Well, we haven't, we haven't come out of any less than yet. We're talking real general numbers right now.
Yes, yes, it feels like the well runs.
Well, I mean, it's the same, it's the same value we used before.
Madam President.
Right.
Miss Henry, I had said that if we had our own money and we utilized those funds, and she said that the rates might, might go up. I believe we should focus on that too, because we're, like Councilman John said here, it's ballooning, it's going up and up and up, the amount. Why get into more debt when we have those funds? And if our rates might go up, it's just my opinion, well, why not just utilize those funds?
Because the USDA has them on reserve, and they send you, with the plea to your reserves to that amount, they have to do another water rate study, and then after the water rate study, they let you only use maybe a portion of that. They definitely not going to let you use almost half of it.
Right, but with that scenario there, our rates might go up, that's what you just said?
Yes.
So let's think about this very carefully, because our customers, they're going to, you know, be paid quite a lot, but we're getting more debt. We're going to pay more interest for many, many, many loans. While in this scenario, we have our funds there, this is our money, and the rates might go up. So this is a challenge, and it's a tough call, that we have to be accountable to our customers. And it's going to be a tough, tough call here. It's simple to think about.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, you have, uh?
Were you finished?
Yes, I'm there.
2.5 million dollars, if we take even a million, Wilson, didn't they say we had a one-year reserve? What type of gentleman said, we have a one-year reserve?
I reached out to our, who, who, who does our water study, and how they actually did that, because we did the audit, and the audit separated the water from the sewer. He said that that's how he based our water rates, was that we would have that in reserve.
2 million?
The 2 million.
So we could use the other 5 points?
Yes.
570?
Right, so he's saying that that's how he based the rates. And so he couldn't give me a number, but he had to come out and do our analysis to do the rate for today's study and use that funny calculator that he has to give us some reference for the water rates to be able to do that. But we also would have to get permission from the USDA, because they may say, even though you all have it, you know, you can't necessarily use it because we have to have the scenario. So we have to actually say, because this is what we agreed to, we allow them to limit us to almost 4 million dollars, is that we have to let the, we could store it up what we have, and that we have to make sure the fund pays for that. And so that's what I'm saying, they might go up. He could tell me on the phone officially, I told him I was coming to meet the council. But when I met with Ben Soto, she said it would throw up some red flags for us to deplete it, because when we had the reserve, we didn't have, we didn't tell them, oh, we have this wonderful capital project that we're going to do, because then he would have plugged it in. But I didn't know I was going to have this wonderful capital project.
We're not going to be pleading if we borrow this 570,000 dollars. So we need to get him to give us a firm answer instead of, and give me a vague answer too, so we know what we're going to be going into, because we don't want more payments. We have more payments, somebody's got to pay it, who pays it is the taxpayers.
But you have to remember, your infrastructure is aged. This is a 35-year-old well, it's 35 years old. And so we have to be able to do the infrastructure at some period in time. Now, what we have to be able to do is we can come back with different funding scenarios. If you want to say, so much we can use for cash money, so much you want to use for revenue here. So we can do that, but it is a very long process, and I have to involve people like myself, public works director, your attorney, your engineers have to sit, even our bond counsel and our finance person have to sit in the room as they answer these questions, because different people have to give them different things. And we can come back with different scenarios, even to see how much, how much we take. I can bring that back to you, but I don't want to just come and lay it out without you knowing that's what we need to go do.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Need permission from the side?
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
I think what everybody wants to know is, how much is the well going to be? Second, do we have to do the interconnect at the same time? Or can we do that at a later date, even if we do do the well?
The interconnect would help you not have to have an emergency situation or a pressure situation in the future, because it will give you, you can do it separately, you can do it separately. However, it's not the best-case scenario. The best-case scenario is to address both of these at the same time. But no, you do not have to do them.
The reason we're saying that, because if the well is going to be 500,000 or 600,000 dollars alone, and if we use that 5.7, the 500 something thousand dollars to do that, well, we're not going to invest with the 2 million dollars. We could get the same in another year, two years, we spare the 350,000, and maybe we could do it again? Or with a small one, out of 30-year loan, or maybe five or 10 years?
Now, one of the things, you have, we spend a lot of time imaging and money on the hospital well that we did with the last project. But since the B Street well hasn't built, we have not done anything to them. We also need to do some things, like we need to paint them, we need to drain them. There's a lot of other maintenance that we need to do to these wells. And there's only so much revenue that we're going to be able to do. And if we keep draining out, things we can actually still have smaller capital projects that you can use, but you're going to have to come up with the maintenance. Now, about, I think Councilman Newsom reminded me about my five-year plan. One of the things I had the engineers to do is to lay out the capital project that we would like to do. The problem is that we never have any money to take care of and maintain. That well at the height of the June Hallow is about 10 years old. We haven't done anything to it. It needs to be cleaned, it needs to be serviced, but we don't have the funds to service it. And so what you're going to do, if you don't do the interconnect, is the next time, when those wells come offline, like just to service the B Street well, it's come offline. Then I'm back with two wells, and I'm back with TCQ going, this is not the best practice.
When I talk about the practice or anything, is that, I guess we know that we do need to have an interconnect just in case there's an emergency. Right, correct?
Yes, the secondary water supply.
All right, but does it have to be at the same time as the water well? No, it doesn't, right?
It does not have to be.
Okay, so if we can do it the following year, or it's like eight, I don't need a brand-new car every year, but I might need one in four years or whatever, if it breaks, that kind of scenario?
Yeah, it's just that we're just going to do the best practice and not kick the can down the road, because it's going to happen. B Street's going to have an issue, or a hospital may have an issue. And again, TCQ is not, the best-case scenario is for us not to have just the two wells. Three wells are optimal, and if I have to take one off of mine, the interconnect will give me enough water that I need to have so that I can keep keeping them on stage. But it's definitely some options, we'll come back with some scenarios if that's what you all would like to have.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I was kind of thinking, once our new well comes in online, that takes a lot of pressure off, you're not having to have some interconnect.
No, sir, it is not, because even though you have the new well, anytime I repair any of the other wells, I have to take it offline. So for us to clean and to service the B Street well, it has to come offline. Then I'm left with the two wells again, I have no secondary.
Well, right now, with just two wells, one of them's kind of crippled.
And the other important part is B Street is the only well in that, in that pressure point. The B Street well is the only well in that pressure point. The Plaza and Hospital share the south pressure point, or low pressure point. B Street's the higher one. So you take it offline. The, one of the original reasons for the interconnect was when B Street was taken down for repairs, you had to have a water mill to serve that pressure point. You can, we can move water, it's just not as, you don't, you will not have a really good pressure from the south in the hospital, lots of wells that have no pressure point. The Oak Hills interconnect would basically supplement B Street for that entire pressure point on that side of the water. But you have, you have three wells and two pressure points, basically.
Mr. Turner? Water is very, very important, and for us not to have a maintenance program, I mean, that issue should come more and more often to council, so to keep up with that maintenance in not going to 10 years or 20 years or so. That issue should be addressed more often. And we all must do our part, starting with the council, administration, and even engineers. I know why it comes to us to a certain time and point that, you know, it's gone, and, you know, we're having issues. When, for example, our vehicle needs a tune-up, our vehicle needs oil change, but we don't do it till it's already smoking. But guess what, it's too late already, and guess what? We have to go rebuild that engine or get a new vehicle, and that is where we are now. And I want to say this, make it public, we are all at fault. Everybody said, well, we all dropped the bucket, and we are dropping it. But we have to get up and look what is right for our customer. And like the councilman to my right side, our taxpayer too, I mean, you know, it's, it's moving. We have to go to get on this issue. Water is very important. If you have no water, you've got a big issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Anderson?
Well, we're, what we're saying, and I agree with everything we're saying, we actually need to start working on a five-year plan, and public works get a five-year plan, where we have maintenance, and we know where the maintenance is at. And you are able to manage the money and say, three years from now, we're going to be having flushes as well, stinking as well, four years from now, we're going to be empty as well. And we have not seen a five-year plan. I remember when you first got here, our first meeting, you started one, but that one will disappear. So we need to get a five-year plan to work, especially on our maintenance of our new water system and our new sewer system. And that should be like a 20-year plan, that we know when we're going to clean, change out area valves, hang down flushes. We need to get a 20-year plan on the maintenance and a five-year plan for the city.
But we can put a capital plan together that we can submit, so the next time when we're looking at our water rates, and we have to do it every year, that we can look at making those commitments of what we need to be able to do. We can even go as far as to earmark the money for that capital improvement. Because the capital improvement plan that M N S did is going to look a lot different now because we made some major improvements to our water system. So when we come for budgeting, we can come up with a three- to five-year plan on the maintenance, and what we need to do, and those things are not cheap. So we're looking for direction as to, do you want us to spend the time with the different scenarios and funding sources with the Texas Water Development Board so that we can come back with some hard numbers, and even looking at some of the capital improvements that we may need to make. However, I do want to say for the record, the only 24-hour emergency meeting I have ever had as a city manager was on this Plaza well. This well has been sucking wind for a long time now, it's sucking sand and oil. It has been in trouble for some time, so it is not something new, but we have to address it at this point, because I cannot put this well back online. Even to sneeve it, it's over 250,000 dollars. That's not necessarily a good steward of the money to put 250,000 dollars into a well that's only going to be 50% on riverbed that has the most productive permits.
Mr. Wallace, what were you going to say?
I don't mean to derail, you know, the conversation or the discussion. All I wanted to say was that I do agree with everything that Councilman Ortiz just said. And I've been working diligently over the past few months, and even prior to this TCQ audit, to go over all our records, all our maintenance records, and I even reached out to Mrs. Turner to find out if there had been anything developed prior to me coming on board. She presented me and sent me what she had, and we are going through that to try and create this O and N, try and create these processes that, yes, you're right, should have been in place beforehand. Unfortunately, however, as painful as it may be, we need to start somewhere. And I do believe that right there with Plaza well, and giving us the ability to move forward with this project, as painful as it may be, is that starting point.
Mr. Anderson?
Again, my vote is yes to go forward with it.
For the second one, the water board, is that the water?
That's just my, if you get.
Let's see approval, the consensus, that's all she. I just think the consensus that we need to go forward, moving back to different scenarios. As a matter of urgency and time, Madam President, these two things go together. We will be a la carte, so put it together, definitely we'll see what you think of wanting to, is that okay? I agree. To see as well for the interconnect, is that all right, Madam?
Yes. Please.
I think everybody's consistent too. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so that would be B and C, taking care of both of them?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're on D, Knights of Columbus.
This is Lance from M N S, he's our drainage engineer. He met with, following our meeting on Thursday, the Knights of Columbus Drainage, he met with public works, I believe Councilman Johns, you were out there as well, when he came? Yes, and so the Knights of Columbus representatives were there as well. And he has a presentation to talk about some solutions on that position. Lance?
Thank you. Good evening. Presentation's behind me, I'll do my best to talk to you and direct my discussion to you, but I may have to turn around to point at a few things up there, so maybe if I turn my back to you. As Ms. Turner said, we did meet onsite to discuss the Knights of Columbus drainage issues, and it turned into a more regional discussion of that area as we were out there. As Ms. Turner said, we did meet with the Knights of Columbus, some staff members, Councilman Johns, and a couple other property owners in that area were there as well. We were able to get some really good information on drainage happenings in that area of Third Street and East Street, some historical information on how the intersection floods, when it floods, how often, how much, and those types of, that type of information that is difficult for us as engineers to calculate sometimes. So it was a very good meeting, we walked away with a lot of good information, so we're happy to have attended that. Before I get into looking at some of the options that we were asked to look at, I would like to just give a quick overview of the existing conditions for some of you who may not be as intimate as what's going on out there. So as you can see, I hope you can see that, it's a little smaller than I thought. You can see, located there is City Hall, and the Knights of Columbus is labeled there. The blue shaded area is the 100-newer terminal flow point. And as you can see, it is running, in this picture, it's running diagonal across the screen there. What is a little bit difficult to see there are some black dotted dashed lines right in here. What is a little bit difficult to see there are some black dotted dashed lines right in here. And this is, this is a representation of the approximate location of existing drainage infrastructure for that area. And then consists mainly of open ditches and culverts that cross the road to move water in this area.